How's everybody? Good to see you.
Terrible.
Terrible? I'm not kidding, we're in our neighborhood, you gotta be fine. I waited for time to see you. Thanks for the invite. We'll wrap your PC.
Okay, I'm gonna wait to start video until I dial in.
I got one at 6:15.
Is it started? And someone's up there.
No. I think you have to start this.
You don't wanna start the video yet. Okay, so it's on, why isn't it letting me dial?
What do you wanna do? One participant, you.
Right here, I need to dial that.
Chicago? Why are you dialing?
Cause that's our time zone.
Well, go ahead and start this. It's time anyway.
Don't, it is.
It hasn't started yet.
It's recording.
Oh, are you sure? I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay, so we need to mute this.
Mute all? No.
Go mute.
Okay, we'll call the May 24th, 2021, Hyawatha Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to order. We'll have roll call.
Jim Craig.
President.
Stephanie.
Here.
Lisa Justin.
Here.
Eddie Jones.
Here.
Terry Trippi. Mark Roth.
Here.
Mark Powers.
Here. Item two, approval of agenda. Pat, we don't have any questions?
No corrections to the agenda.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the agenda? I'll sub move. We have a motion? Second? All in favor, stand by by standing by? Aye. Aye. Close? Close? Motion carried. We have the approval of the April 26th, 2021 Regular Meeting Minute. Have a motion to approve? Second? Yeah, second? All in favor, stand by by standing by? Aye. Close?
Item four, community development directors report.
Just one second. That's cheating.
Pat, is that you, Community Department Director, to report?
Community Department Report, yes, that is me. I'm going to commit a new thing on the agenda so that I can update you on projects that have happened. Because I heard from my colleagues saying, "Well, whatever happened to the project that we approved two months ago?" So, what I'd like to do is just on the agenda, I didn't prepare anything for tonight because the item that I'm going to talk about is still on our agenda of the final flat, which is Hyawatha, which is something that we've been working on. But otherwise, I'm hoping to have a lift or to start a lift based on the project we've got on a regular basis. Well, that's what that's for.
I think that's a very good item. Is that gonna be something like North's Allegion? The project, when they started, things like that? Is what you're gonna put on them, or what?
Well, it's mostly gonna focus on items that need to address here at this meeting. So if it hasn't come across here, probably not. But if you have a project you want me to check on or need information on, we could add that to the list as well. The ones the American Legion would only come on if we, for some reason, addressed it for like a second. Which I don't know, I don't remember that we have.
Okay, moving on to 5A, business. Consider resolution for the recommendation to City Council to approve a final flat and development agreement submitted by Schnor Bonifazi for the property known as Hyawatha East, First Edition, Hyawatha, Iowa.
If I might, Mr. Chair. This is the third time that this is coming for you. First is the preliminary flat, you some of you remember all three times. The second time was the approval of the site plan. It's been a design-guided area until you approve that. It's actually gone to council for an at-risk permit and also for the preliminary flat approval. And this is the final flat. They actually are supposed to have the final flat before they start doing work. If you're familiar with the site, they've already begun. They did go to council and get an at-risk permit or permission to proceed before the final flat. I'm contentious, of course, upon getting a final flat. And they also are contentious upon the development agreement, which in this case addresses some public improvements that have to take place with this project. For the stormwater drainage along the water road and for the development of a little bit of the paved surface, which will continue out from the previous project. That's our brief update on Hyawatha.
There's a small section in the middle in there with the two acres, that's where the extension pond is up, is, or what is that part for?
That is correct. It is considered an outlot, even though it's not going to be buildable, but it does contain an extension basin for the entire development.
Did you had any comments from anybody, from the public, or anything?
We have not heard any comments, but I'm aware of it. No?
Do you think they're done with the agreement?
They're not quite done, they're still, they're still working. They haven't started forming any foundations. But they do have a foundation permit for, for buildings on the south flat.
I guess my question is, is everything consistent with the final flat?
Ah, yes. Everything so far is consistent with the final flat, yes.
Can you reveal what they're building?
We approved, I think you'll remember, we approved, maybe you weren't here, we approved the site plan for the south flat. And on that flat, we have four buildings that already have a building permit and have potential for four more buildings. But his building is flex space, which then Wilson is, he's kinda got a pattern for that. He built them with a front or an office and then the back for storage and warehouse associated with that. Usually it's entrepreneurial businesses that come in there where they're not looking for a lot of space, but they do need to be in a commercial area. So far, it's been very successful at building these buildings. My knowledge, he does not have tenants. I did.
Have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to approve? And we have a second.
Patrick Craig.
Yes.
Eddie Jones.
Aye.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Mark Roth.
Aye.
Lisa Justin. Aye. Stephanie.
Aye.
Aye. Item B, consider resolution for recommendation to City Council to approve the final flat submitted by Brain Engineering for the property known as Pines at Turf Creek, Sixth Edition, Hyawatha, Iowa.
This is, if I might? This is kind of a unique final flat. A lot of times, Brain Engineering will provide plots, you know, in this sort of flat, using a platform survey. And that's usually when there's only two lots involved. In this particular case, it ended up with a lot of different plots in the division. And we believe it is to separate those lots from purchase by individual Virginia landlords. The other thing that complicates this one is the fact that it is a designated drainage easement for the flat. And so we wanted to make sure that that was retained and not adversely affecting the storm drainage for the entire area. Brain Engineering did a good job of figuring all that out. They actually put it in the notes to include the drainage easement requirement for two of the small pieces or small lots. So even if they wanted to purchase or designate it with ownership of an adjacent lot, they would retain their drainage requirement.
Basically, what this is, is just if a neighbor wanted to buy it or they can purchase one of these?
That is.
And it's not, it's not a buildable lot?
That is correct. They have to be adjacent landowner. If you have any value, it can. Same reason they're doing this is the HOA wants to get rid of some of the property that they're responsible for. They, this is one of them. And they also signed, some opinions, they did a platform survey for another lot in that, in that building. Which they decided didn't happen.
I must be getting old, guys. I had, I had a squint to see it on the location.
Yes.
Seventeen footer drainage easement, right down, going to an angle?
Yes, there is.
So it's just for those people like to mow, right?
If they, you got house on both sides, can they split?
It can. And the lot is fine, he put outlots, mixed, they head to the south. Outlots one, two, three, that's the adjacent to the north property. I see. They're not established by. Yeah, I think that probably isn't that really, yeah. There wasn't nothing to advantage that appears.
I agree, I'm not a surveyor, but the guy did a great job.
He did.
Hopefully, I'm calling it, you can have.
I created you for it.
Yeah. The other thing that we looked at is, it was an unbuildable lot before and there were no sidewalk requirements either, front, this one. There's this, there's a settlement that is only putting sidewalks on the side.
On the side of the street, yeah.
We don't do that anymore, but we do have one, definitely change that option.
So that's not typical.
It's not typical anymore.
I would make a motion to approve the, uh, Pines at Turf Creek Sixth Edition. Do we have a motion and a second?
Lisa Justin. Aye. Mark Roth.
Aye.
Jim Craig.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Eddie Jones.
Aye.
Mark Powers.
Aye. Motion carried. Planning and zoning training session, rezoning?
Yes, Mark, I, um, it has been about two years, I think, since we've done any kind of a training session. I don't remember, have you been involved in last one? And Lisa, I think she probably. And since we've had some turnover, we thought it would be good to refresh your memories and renew your understanding of what your job is as members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Because you are a recommending body and you do have certain parameters in which to work. We thought we would break out rezonings this time because it tends to be one of the more controversial aspects of the region. And so I, I've asked Mark Powers to.
Mark Parmenter.
Mark Parmenter.
Still a couple minutes.
Still a couple.
I told him, I told him you could have 15 minutes, which means it's probably gonna take him a half hour.
Actually, he said four hours, and I said, "I'll get it done in a half hour." Nice to see everybody, Mark Parmenter, City Attorney. You know, it's great to be back in person with everybody. I don't remember the last time I was in person for P&amp;D. I'll bet it's been a year and a half or more. But it's great to be back. Jerry, things come, comes to everything, which is terrific. Before we get started, first thing I want to say is thank you for your service on the commission. You know, without folks like you being able to dedicate your personal time, whether it's City Council or Planning, Zoning, or Board of Adjustment, the city can't function the way it functions. And without folks like you being able to dedicate your time, we wouldn't be where we are, so thank you. I'm not gonna get up here and preach, I want to have a conversation about these kinds of things. So, as Pat said, P&amp;D is an advisory body, and contrasting with Court of Adjustment, which actually makes decisions that are, they're quasi-judicial. So if the council didn't like the Board of Adjustment's decision or the party asking for the adjustment doesn't like Court of Adjustment's decision, they can appeal that decision to the district court. So that's, that's one of the differences. You can make recommendations, goes up to council. Your recommendation could be thumbs up, and council could vote in favor. Or you could not recommend something, and if you go to council, and they pass it anyway. Or you could give thumbs up, and council could say, "No, we're not gonna pass it." So you're truly a recommending body. But your body is very important, and why? Because you're the policy community. You don't have any political, or shouldn't have any political impact like council might have, or the mayor, Mark's putting things together, to make your decision. So that's why P&amp;D is so important. Let's talk a little bit about the differences between what is public input versus public hearing. I'm gonna pick on my friend Jim Craig. Jim, what's the difference between those two?
Well, I'm assuming you're having a vote on a, if they're zoning better and so you can say, "If you're required by law, take account of the public or public interest in the area," you can have the specific.
But you got the right.
I pray you will.
So tonight, obviously, we had an agenda, which was to pass the resolution. So with tonight's resolutions, were they public hearings or public input?
There's input, there's no hearing.
I think yes, but, that's right. Exactly. By the way, ask questions if you want to. This is not just the agenda, if you have questions to ask. So, as a member of P&amp;D, you, you represent the city. I mean, there's, there's gonna be occasions when people are gonna come up to you and say, "Mark, are you familiar with that new rezoning that they're talking about doing for?" And just fill in the blank for the proper. And so you might say, "Yeah, I've heard about that." You're, you're representing the city. So it's, it's always important that as a representative of the city, we do it in a professional manner, which you all do. We don't, we don't wanna make comments in public, this is Mark speaking, in public and say, "You know what, I really don't like this project. I don't think it's good for the city." Or, "You know what, this guy's been before our commission a dozen times over the years. I just don't like what he does. It's not good for the community." Or, "I don't like the plan, I think it's bad, bad for the community." Or any personal attack. I have a witness in you know with this body in this community. I just think of one, but it was a law type. It's rare. And so it's important that you don't, that we don't do that. We're gonna talk about what's appropriate, what makes sense. You know, what's that Pat needs to have on his agenda that he asked me to talk about with social media? I'm not on social media, I'm not on Facebook, I have emails, Jim loves emails. If it, if it works for emails, I think it probably practiced in 20 years. But social media has become an important part of what we do. And so I would, listen, we all have a right to say what we want to say to a certain extent, but I would caution you on making comments about projects that might be coming before this or the zoning meeting. Okay? Questions? Jay's got an orange cross, and this time he's trying to throw something at me. He's my neighbor. All right. These are what make, in my opinion, I think Pat would agree with you, what are appropriate remarks? And I saw tonight, you guys were asking those questions. You know, "Has this final flat been modified?" Does it, and other thing, "Does it fit within the comprehensive plan of the city?" That's a great question. "What are the city's future land use?" How does it, how, how does it fall within the future land use plan? Does, does this fit the acceptable zoning standards? For example, setbacks. Transitional yards. Screening, what screening? Like a berm with emergrains? Or, what do we call those emergrains of? Well, how do we, what do you call?
Arbovaya.
Arbovaya, yeah, that's a screen, fencing. Those are great questions. Maybe even sustainability. And I add this one to Pat's list. Does the city have anything like a proposed use somewhere else in the city? In other words, have we already approved something like this before? Not that we set a precedent, but sort of. And if it's, if it's been done, how has it impacted the city? Do we have any complaints about how we've done in the northwest territory, and how we wanna do it, handle it? So the history of, of a particular zone. Motions and resolutions, you know, I, I have this discussion with both P&amp;D and Board of Justice, but also council. I, I think whenever you make a motion, it's always easier to make it in a positive. Because if you make a negative motion, but you're in favor of it, how, what do you say? "I move that we do not pass this." Do you say, but you're in favor of it, do you say yes, or do you say no? That's why if you say, no matter if you're going to vote in favor of it or not, whoever makes the motion should always make it in a positive. "I move that we pass, that we pass Pines at Turf Creek, Sixth Edition, Hyawatha, Iowa," just like the charity tonight. So if you're in favor of it, that's easy, aye. If you're not in favor of it, that's easy too, nay. But if we do it in a negative, I think it becomes cumbersome. So to me, all motions, all resolutions should always be in a positive, even if we don't pass them. Now here's the other thing too, just because you make the motion or you make the second, doesn't mean you have to vote in favor of it. You're just trying to move along. Mark, how many years did we deal with that when you were sitting in cash seat over the years?
Quite a few.
Quite a few. Because people were afraid to make the motion, they're afraid to second it, because, "Well, wait a second, I, I must be tipping my hand, I must be voting in favor of it, because I'm, I'm making a positive motion." Well, we're just trying to procedurally keep moving, okay?
But I, I will say this, if I might.
Yes.
That it is critical that you get to the point where we actually get a motion to take action.
Right.
Otherwise, you don't, you don't even take a recommendation or the accountability to hear it.
That's right.
It doesn't mean you always have to vote in the positive or that you, let's say, for instance, Mark, what if the motion is positive and it doesn't pass? Can it just be considered a defeat if there would be no recommendation? Or is it a requirement to make another motion to deny?
Well, I think you could do it both ways. I mean, if you, if somebody puts a positive motion in, and it's seconded, and we have four nays, whatever, we have seven people, right? So we have six nays and one, one yes. So it's defeated. So in my mind, I don't know if you necessarily need another motion because you've already voted on it. And I think that could be then, in no rec, you know, the recommendation to council is to not pass, or not, not allow the rezoning, as they say. Okay? Pat, help me with this, in your outline, you said, "Objections must be, must indicate a valid reason." I want to question what.
Well, generally, if you, if, if we're agreeing to rezoning and you choose to vote negative to the rezoning, there should be a, we have a list of criteria to meet when, when we talk about rezoning. Following comprehensive plan, maintaining the right setback and natural structures, is it a valid use for the area? But those are very specific criteria that, if you think about it in a, in one sense, if he has done his work, the applicant has done all his work, and everything he submits complies with every one of our lifting items, but you still don't know, if it is imperative, that we hear why. Because it may or may not be a valid reason. See what I'm saying? Because our actions. Because our actions are not just affecting the neighbors that might be complaining about a project, but they're actually more affecting this guy that's taken the energy to come before us and make a plan for our piece of property. So we are in essence, if we don't approve, if we're trying to deny something that he wants, we should give him a valid reason. So a valid reason would not be because.
I think we have too many donations this time already.
Yeah, yeah. Or this developer doesn't have the one that I heard, a busy developer doesn't build his building thing.
Right.
Now, those would be things that would not go well, but it is encompass, what I wanted to try to push is there may be a valid reason.
Well, I'll give you one valid reason, was, we had, uh, and I won't say the doctor's name, but he was here and he didn't really give us an explanation what he was really was going to do. And we voted him down. Then he came back and then he had all these ducks in the water and then we passed it. So I mean, there was, that was, but we didn't give him a reason, but he knew the reason. Uh, but I mean, if I vote nay on something, do I have to stand up and say why? I don't think so. I think it's my opinion and that's my opinion only.
That's what I would try to avoid and. You couldn't tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, I think if, if, Kenny.
We're only talking rezoning.
Yeah, on rezoning, if you've got a particular issue that you're com, I'm not comfortable with, or that you don't think the developers complied with, to me, it's contingent on you as one of the board members to bring that out as part of the discussion and flush it out. Because at the end of the day, and I think this is where Pat's going, if the developer has dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, then there should be really no reason not to vote in favor of it. Because if it's just a personal opinion.
So in other words, every time we come here, we're supposed to vote aye?
No, not saying that at all.
I'm, I mean, that's just exactly about, basically what you're telling us.
No, I'm not saying that. Because there could be reasons to vote against something, like in a rezon. And there's other things that come before you other than rezoning. Yeah. So I think the, the, the point of Pat's comment and the discussion is to get you to think about that because Kenny, as an example, if you've got a question as to, does something that bothers you for you to vote in favor of, somebody else probably has the same question. So get it out of the table, talk about it, flush it out. Because you may, you may propose something that the others have a problem with, and then if it's not, they pass, that's the point. Do you understand? That makes sense?
Yeah.
Well, you do, you always do. I would never stand before this body or any other body and say, you always need to say.
Well, yeah, basically, you were saying though, that if it's got, everything is dotted right down the line.
Sure.
And, and I feel there's a little problem, then I still can vote nay on that.
Sure you can, but I, what I'm saying is.
But I'm, we're honored a lot, but I guess what I'm saying is that, that if it's, just everything is right down the line, that we should have to, we should, I mean, today, everything goes right down the line.
Sure.
Okay? So we all voted for it, okay? But it, sometimes you have a question or so, whatever. And we try to bring these questions out.
Yeah, that's the key, right?
I mean, you know, just like I asked, you know, on this narrow line, what's, what are you doing this for?
Right.
I mean, uh, and we got an answer.
And that's a perfect question. That's, that's, you, you have something in your mind that was bothering you as to this and you brought it to the attention of the board and you got your answer. That's what I'm talking about.
But Mark, let's make an assumption that you did get the answer. Let's say, let's say we didn't know, we just left it empty out of the box. That would be a reason to say, you know what, this final plot isn't complete and we can't, can't have it. So there are valid reasons, in particular, if you look at rezoning, another valid reason is sometimes an opinion, and that is, is it best used? But even though it follows comprehensive plan and if this, everything is, is fine, you can still have a reason to say, I don't think it's the best use because there's, there's too much natural vegetation that you don't want to disturb. I'm going to vote no. That's about the reason.
And my point is if you have those, bring it to the attention of the other members because they may have the same thing or they haven't thought about it. That's one. Okay? Anyone else? Questions?
Are you sure that if you don't have any proper reason to vote for this discriminatory or?
Right.
So if you say a positive one.
That's, that's right. And you know, one thing, if you all are blessed with is, is Pat, he does a pretty good job of putting everything together to get, me anticipate a lot of, probably a lot of your questions you're going to have. So to me, more information is always better than not enough. If you've got questions or you think something's missing in that deliberative portion of the, of the matter for business, that's what you talk about, bring it to everybody's attention. Okay? All right. Conflicts of interest. You're a mind reader. That's exactly my, my question. Meet the mind reader because he, he's.
That was exactly one of my, one of my questions.
You know, these, these are hard and, and they really are on a case by case basis. You know, to me, there's two types of conflict of interest. There's, there's actual conflict of interest and then there's the appearance of a conflict of interest. And so every, Pat, we've had this come up over the years, both at council level, uh, P and D, Board of Adjustment, and, and everyone is really determined on a case by case method. Because every fact is a little bit different. And so you all throw out what you think might be a potential conflict of interest.
Okay, let's say I know, let's say, let's say a close relative of mine is a developer in the Cedar Rapids metro Ohio off the area, a big developer. Do I know the person? Not that well. Do I, what, what, if I was riding my bike and I said, hey, Fred, how you doing? And I mean, that's, I don't know him, but, you know, so things like that are, are really, you know, and then it's the perception, Mark, is that, that, well, Mark Ross, his relative knows that guy, so, you know, stuff like that bothers me, you know?
No, and I think, and to me, it's important to be thinking about it. I mean, that's, that's the first step, is to be conscious of potential conflict of interest. In my opinion, the example that you just gave us, unless you've got a peculiar investment in that development, you don't really have a conflict of interest, you have to know somebody. I mean, Mark, how long have you known Joe Longman?
Oh, a long time.
Joe's been here for the proposal, you know him, that is a great conflict of interest for you. You're not a partner with Joe.
No.
I'm guessing. I know that through a past. But, but if you're, if you're an investor in a project that's coming before this body for approval, then you probably shouldn't be voting on it or even giving public input.
I think I had a, a conflict and it was over the library, um, basically, because my wife volunteered at the library and she had a problem with, with the library board. And I guess when I come up to the library and I'm the thing over there, I voted nay for everything. And I think I probably should have excused myself on it. Because there was a lot of hard feelings.
Sure. Anyone else have an idea of what could be a?
So what if I'm the HOA president of this HOA in this example, right? Like, we're trying to get rid of this land that we don't, we don't want to pay the mowing. That's probably an idea, by the way. We, we don't want to pay the mowing, so I'm assuming if I'm the HOA president and this proposal affects the common areas in the, in the HOA that I've ever, that I've ever accused myself of voting, right? Is that how that would happen?
I, I would think so because there's, there would be a peculiar interest in, for you, because presumably your association fees might become less if you don't have this additional stuff.
Right. Benefits mean financially as a, as a member of the HOA.
And that's the beautiful thing about having a seven member body. The conflicts are going to come up all the time.
So I was saying that Kenny, who's a member on the board, not, uh, not the volunteer board as well, but right?
Yes.
Library board?
Library board.
Well, she was on the friends of the library.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I mean, conflict of interest goes both ways. You'll vote again because you don't like it or, you know, or you go for it because you, because you like everything that's around you. You are in a community and you know, somebody, somebody on this board will know, in all likelihoods, will know who is involved with almost every action we take. It's just because of the size of the community.
That's right.
But just knowing somebody or even knowing somebody that's involved doesn't make it a conflict of interest.
No, if you, if you come across something that you think is a conflict of interest, call Patrick and if we need to have a contact call and flush it out, we'll do that. We've done that in the past, Mark, you and I have done it, forty years. Pat, you and I have done it. And, and it happens, Kenny, especially in a small community.
Yeah.
I mean, but like I said, every, every, every case is different. Now, what Lisa had talked about, to me, was an actual conflict. What's the appearance of a conflict? Maybe that's getting a little closer to what Mark had proposed, even though I still think that's still far enough away that it's really not even the appearance of a conflict. Um, the appearance of conflict could be that Mark has done business with Joe Longman for the last twenty years, but he's not doing business with him on this project. Is that technically a conflict for that matter coming before the board for Mark? Probably not, but is it an appearance perhaps of a conflict? Maybe?
And then, Mark, you get to the question where, we get this governance all the time at work, like every year.
Right.
We get governance where, what is acceptable taking something from a vendor? Do we give up? Is a ten dollar lunch at Freddy's okay, but if they take me to a Cubs game, is that okay? I mean, then, then now all of a sudden, you know, a developer says, hey, let's go, I've got a bunch of fifty yard line tickets to a Hawks game. Is that, is that, you know, then all of a sudden, you know, at work, that's the vote and you cannot, you can't do that. There's a, there's, there's a, a dollar amount, you know, you, everybody kind of knows.
That's a corporate policy.
Yes, right.
And so for council members, there's a, there's an Iowa law.
How much is this? Five bucks?
Two ninety nine.
Two ninety nine.
Two ninety nine. Kenny, you're actually a Big Mac. Um, so, you know, the best rule is not for someone who's elected, the rule is just saying, thanks, can't do anything. Again. And we've had that come up in several times. Yeah. Right. Exactly. Now, but that's a really good question. Does it also apply to an appointed person on a commission? I have never thought of that before. I don't know that Iowa law that says that you can't take that ticket to the Iowa football game. But then to me, the problem is the appearance of an enterprise.
Exactly.
That's the issue. And if I were on this body, I would want, I would not want that circling around me that I may have been improper. So to me, the best course of action is just saying, thanks, you can't do it.
Now, we, here, I'll take it one step further, Mark. If I'm a, if I'm a Joe Longman tailgate and he's serving food and drinks to me, that's just like, okay, I'm just, I'm just walking by a tailgate and I know Mark is there or Lisa's there. To me, that's not, to me, that's not a conflict because.
Well, he's not serving them just to you.
Yes, exactly.
And everybody happens to come by. You mean, that, this is why it's important, see, every one of these is a little different than that. And I, and, and if we can get really granular here.
Sure.
But I, at, at a high level, there, I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm trying to make this clear in my mind.
Right.
To me, what's the most important?
Well, sound of integrity.
Well, exactly.
Yeah.
Kevin, you're absolutely right, but also that we're at least talking about, so it's in the back of your mind when something comes up that, that all of a sudden that little person under election wishes that. Mark?
So we had, here's Green, rezoning, my second meeting, and I live in here to Green. And once I learned what it was about and what the neighborhood was, I was fine, but what if I just was opposed to it because I thought the density was wrong? And I lived there, so I thought it was going to affect it, but I, the zoning, you're right, there's your thing.
Yeah.
Plugged, cleared out all the i's.
Right.
Just not a conflict.
To, to me, it is because it's your, you, you don't want it to pass for your personal reasons.
So that's enough.
Yes, for me, it is. Listen, you guys are the pulse of the community, you, you speak collectively on behalf of folks that bring things to you. And, and it's not going to be uncommon that somebody is going to be involved with something sometime to create, that could create a problem.
I, I would differentiate a councilman in that situation versus my name is zoning. A councilman could not let that be.
Could not let what?
Could not let.
Desire a personal opinion.
Yeah, yeah. He could not.
That's right.
You, I think you have that luxury.
But it may not be a conflict of interest.
That's correct. But that would be exposed as we pull this front.
One of the things that I'm terribly disappointed with this board is that you actually passed Jim Craig's application to move into our community.
Wait a minute, we should have voted on that.
We should have done a hush, a vague process.
How, I didn't get a chance to vote nay.
I, I know, exactly. That's my point, one is brought before this body.
But Kenny, it's not our neighborhood. We at least put him.
We put him in someplace else, right?
Been extremely disappointing to hear this. The only thing I like about having Jim in our community is he pays property tax. But I think they're still in arrears, so I'm not sure he paid it. Okay, good.
We're going to raise him.
Anybody have, Pat, anything else you want to talk about?
I just, uh, one thing that I learned that I think we're probably going to try to do to help Mark, is that we try, when we put our minutes and agendas together, we sometimes use the term public hearings. I think we're going to change all of that to public input so that when we do social media stuff, we say, we'll open the public's input. We're now open for public input now.
That was a question I had because we seem to have a problem with people wanting to rehash comments that have already been made and everything else. Would, would it be appropriate to ask for public input and then somebody, a member of the board actually saying, it's time for board discussions, I move to cease the public input?
Well, I think you can do that, Mark, as the chair.
Okay.
I mean, after you've heard, after you've heard, I mean, I, I always hear, I always think you're on the side of letting everybody talk as much as possible.
I understand.
But if you start getting some repeat comments over and over and over, then I think you can say, the mayor type is really good, the type would say, anyone else has anything else they want to add that hasn't already been said?
Yes.
And I think that's a great way to handle it. Because then, if they come up and say the same thing, well, it sounds like we're just hearing the same thing, then you can, how about let the council, the commission discuss?
Let the board discuss.
That's right. That's right.
Okay.
And I think as a chair, you can do that, Mark, it's your meeting.
Okay. I like the, I like your comment about the, because I, I think people sometimes view that public hearing comment in the wrong fashion. It's actually a public hearing in front of the city council.
Correct.
It's public input here.
Exactly. And there is a distinction.
So would it, would, in that instance, would it be before that part comes up, to clarify that with the audience and say, okay, folks, this is a public, you know, this is not a public hearing, this is a public input?
I don't know that I can say it that way, Mark. I think I would, if I were Mark Powers, I would say, there's a lot of Mark's. Um, I, I think if I were Mark Powers, I would say, okay, now, now is the time for public input on this matter. Anyone in the audience have anything you want to say to the board? And then they can come up, say for them where they live and say the beat.
As long as we don't say the word here.
Right.
I think they'll get it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I like, I like the comment about public.
And, you know, I'm not having anything to do with what we're doing tonight, I love the idea of, of you giving a board update, just so you know for things, I mean, otherwise you don't know about it, so it's hard being developed.
It's only taken him seven years to figure that out.
We know he's a little slow.
He's been a little bit, like, so much.
And Mark, I was, I was asking a question. No, go ahead, Jerry, you're, you're way ahead. Going back to giving a reason you're going to say nay. Um, shouldn't that happen in the discussion?
Yes. Yeah. Now, now's the time to vote. Right. You were, that's what you were saying, was that, you were talking about theory discussion.
Yeah.
Right, I, I'm having, I'm struggling with this because. I, I'm having, I'm struggling with this because it's all the way.
Totally voids, I mean, you always, don't know. Don't, I mean, there are...
Well, I, I think that's the absolute progress, huh, Jerry? Because otherwise, how do you flush it out if it's, because other people may have the same, right? I mean, if you do it at the time you're voting, then you've already moved the vote.
That's too late.
It's too late, because you might be in the third vote.
I know. I, I mean, I misunderstood.
No, no, you're, you're clarifying, clarification's right.
Yeah, I think so, because I think I was wrong. You're right, we just wanna make sure that the minutes can be collected. And so, you're right, if it happens in discussion, that's perfect.
Right. If I was inferring, it had to do with, when you voted, it happened to be wrong. Right.
Okay, so I have a question. So let's say that this flat with the Outlaw A comes before us, and Kenny says, you know, I'm not comfortable voting in favor of this without knowing what Outlaw A could be useful. Now suppose I agree with Kenny, because he's very wise. So if I agree with Kenny, do I just say something, or can I just, when the vote comes down, can I just vote no?
Well, I, I mean, first of all, if Kenny says that, I would think the next thing would happen is Pat would come in and say, okay, Kenny, what are your concerns? What are your questions? Let me keep my hands in the air.
Right, and let's say, let's say, let's say Patrick can't answer the question, because they didn't tell us.
Right.
So now Kenny says, you know, no, not comfortable, and that goes back to your point in December, and somebody thinks we come back, right? And say, well, now we can do it, and let's, but I was saying, if I agree with Kenny, do I need to go on record at that point and say, I agree with Kenny, I'm not comfortable without knowing the purpose of Outlaw A?
Well, my opinion is you don't, you're not required to go on the record, but I would think that one of the members of this board, you would want to go on the record and say, you know what, I agree with Kenny because of this, and the other thing I'm concerned about is, you know, something else. And get it out on, just to flush it out.
Through the discussion.
Right. During the discussion part.
So if they can't, if we can't get a direct answer on this...
Right.
When it comes time to vote, you can vote nay, and don't have to sit down and explain to it.
Because then we all...
Because we've already discussed it.
That's exactly right.
It already happened to them.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah, exactly.
And then because the builder's already slipped five hundred bucks in my pocket, I don't know. Oh, oh. That's when you get your chance.
That's right. That's right. Well, and, and I, I'm not saying that for any member of this board that you're, uh, like, gonna be shy and not wanna say, hey, I'm concerned about this or this or that.
Have you been shy?
Nope.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, it was, uh, you know, it's for somebody, if, if, they, they think there's a conflict that's, it's something people will press, that's people...
You, you're talking about like staff or... Because we were presumably, I mean, if we know about it, if we know...
A lot of times, he'll have it in his comments. Um, when it, if you read, you know, all his comments on the, for what Pat puts down in there, there might be something in there that he might put in there that, there's a little conflict with the sewer. So if you read all of his comments and stuff like this, he'll have some of that in there. And then at the meeting, you can bring this up, and then he'll clarify if they've straightened this out or have not straightened it out.
Okay, what I was asking, though, is if you think that I'm gonna have a conflict...
Yes.
Because you know me.
Right.
And you know what's coming, and I know exactly what's coming. Are there times when you call and say, please think about this? Because sometimes we may not know till...
That would certainly be my recognition.
I never even, I never even gave a second thought that anybody living in a, I'm, you know, on the board, that Pat would have been a valid...
Well, I called you by...
I do need to think about it a little more, right?
I called you by three, because I wondered about it.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
We talked about it three, you know?
But sometimes we might not notice, is all I'm saying.
Exactly. Well, and, and Pat and his team may not know, or I may not know either. Yeah. So...
But, yeah, I've read, I kind of like parts of that, that's a, about a good point, and I got, read that, and said, ask that question, but...
Kevin, how long have you been on the board?
Three, four years?
How long have you, four years?
Five.
Five? You get him for five. And Kenny, how long have you been on?
Uh, I'm going on six years.
Okay. During your second...
Yeah.
Second term. You have a true term?
No, yeah, no term left, man.
So you could be, you could be on this board and prove, you have a two in. That's a during the work, but a law of the country.
I'll tell you what, by the time I'm done on this one here, I'll be eighty-six years old, so we'll see how we go.
We've got like four more terms, though. Mark, how long have you been on the board?
Seven years.
How about you, Mark?
I think I filled out, filled out one, and then I did a, a five. I don't know if this is like second, so, I don't know, probably about...
You're close to seven years.
Yeah.
Seven years, yeah.
How long has Terry been on? This is first term?
No, Terry's been on...
Let's say that, that's been here is Mark Ross. He was actually on when I got...
Okay.
Yeah. And that's been seven years. And then we shortly after that, Mark got on. Danny was already on, and then Kevin is relatively, but not as new as Lisa and Jim.
I thought, I came on a few months before Kevin.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she was just before.
Okay.
But just not months, just not months. We're both, I mean, I'm going, so, so what do we do?
And Terry is before Kevin.
Okay. So do you know how long you've been here?
Yeah.
Well, I'm counting you, I think it's just a few meetings before you.
Is that happening?
Three years?
Yeah.
It's not like that?
Yeah.